Ron? All right, good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled county council meeting for Williamsburg County. At this time, we're going to ask Councilwoman Hales if she would please to provide us with our opening invocation. Councilwoman Hales.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for giving us another opportunity to meet again. And although we are short in numbers, but we pray that you would help us, O God, to make good decisions tonight. These and all other blessings, we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hales. All right, approval of minutes. We have the approval of minutes for the public hearing and regular council meeting from October 17th, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the approval of minutes for that public hearing and regular council meeting of October 17th, 2023?
So move, Miller.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Miller and a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion has been carried. We also have approval of minutes for our regular council meeting from November 5th, excuse me, November 6th, 2023. Is there a motion to accept the approval of minutes for the regular council meeting November 6th, 2023?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Woods and a second by Councilwoman Hales. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that both motions were carried. All right, ordinances. We have ordinances. First reading of ordinance number 2023-15, title only, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Field Trip acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities at one or more locations in the county collectively, the project, to the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project and three other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept first reading?
Motion for first reading.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Woods to accept first reading. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. Second reading of ordinance number 2023-13, an ordinance to establish rules and regulations for recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds within the unincorporated areas of Williamsburg County to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Williamsburg County. Is there a motion to accept second reading? All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hales to accept second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. We've had a request from the county attorney to table second reading of ordinance number 2023-14 until the next meeting. So we're going to table that one to the... All right, can I have a motion to table second reading of ordinance number 2023-14?
Motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman...
Miller.
Miller. Thank you, sir. And we have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this motion, this particular item has been tabled until a later date. There are no third readings. There are no third readings. All right. Resolution number 2023-11, which is a resolution authorizing, one, the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, the county, and a company identified for the time being as Project Field Trip acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities at one or more locations in the county collectively, the project, to the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project, and three other matters relating thereto. Is there a motion to accept resolution number 2023-11?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Councilman Woods. Is there a second?
Second, Miller.
We have a second by Councilman Miller. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that this motion has been carried. Other items, and I'll address this, during the budget process, we indicated that we were going to implement four furlough days for our county employees in order to get this budget, this budget, but balanced and passed, excuse me. Last week, near the end of the week, our finance department was able to locate some funds within the payroll department to assist us in reducing the number of furlough days from four days to two days. But I can't do any, I have to get council to approve that since it is amending the budget. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to reduce the number of furlough days from four to two days.
Mr. Supervisor, before we vote on that, can we identify the days that we will negate that furlough? While I was saying that, because I was hoping that we could not have one of those furlough days that remain is the one that's nared to the Christmas holidays. Can we can do away with that one and let that be one of the ones we exempt?
That is, that was the first one that got exempted, Councilman Woods.
Okay, okay.
And so it will be that one and I think one around February.
Okay.
And, but those two days, we won't need to do them. We found some monies within the budget to be able to do those.
Great.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Supervisor, I have a comment or concern. When we voted on these furlough days, it was during the time of the budget and we had full counsel to make a decision either way or the other. And I just feel like we should have had full counsel here to do this instead of just a couple of us making our decision. Is any way that we can do this at another time where everybody would be here and they could voice their opinion or whatever?
Well, I mean, I would leave that up to council, but these meetings are scheduled way in advance. And I do understand that sometimes some of us have scheduling conflicts. That, I would leave that up to the body. But, you know, as far as me in my office, we're prepared to move forward to cancel two of those furlough days for our employees. But I'll leave that up to you all. I mean, the only thing I can ask you all for is a motion to vote to reduce the number of furlough days from four to two. If I get a motion and I get a second, then I'll call for a vote. If I don't get a motion or I don't get a second, I can't call for a vote. So ultimately, that's going to be you all's decision. So at this time, you know, I'll entertain a motion to reduce the number of furlough days for our employees from four days to two.
Mr. Supervisor, question. When that budget process came up and that night of when we voted for the budget, and I voted nay. And one of the reason I voted nay was not necessarily for the increase in the millage, but the reason I voted a nay was because I didn't agree with the furloughs. I didn't think we had to do both of them. So I don't know what position that's going to put us in tonight, but I still, that is my vote to nay, no furloughs.
Yes, sir. I understand. Well, and what we're trying to do tonight is, as I indicated earlier, we've been able to find some monies within the payroll department to go ahead and reduce the number of furlough days. So that would take care of what your wishes were, Councilman Miller.
Not necessarily because no furlough days, not reduce it, but no furlough.
Well, we're reducing them down to two, and if I can get rid of the other two later on, we will. But we're, we're starting off with just getting rid of the two, and then we'll start working toward the others. Now, I want to remind this, this council, I was very clear during that budget process that I was not in favor of furlough days. But that was something that some of the council members put on the table as a way to get this budget balanced and to reduce, you know, the amount of millage that we were going to have to raise. But again, you know, I'm prepared to go ahead and reduce those days from four to two tonight with council's approval. And then, you know, at the beginning of the year, we'll continue to look at our finances. And if our finances continue to, 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 to do what they're doing now, I think we will, Mr. Miller, be able to take off the other two as well. That would be my goal.
Mr. Supervisor...
Yes, ma'am.
What those, those two furlough days, what the amount it told us to?
It's somewhere in the area of $125,000.
If I, if I'm in order, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to offer a motion and affirmative that we approve the reduction of the four to two, and you continue to look for some funds, and in event you're successful in doing that, then we'll go ahead and just eliminate the furlough days altogether. That's, that's my motion.
All right, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, motion has failed because there's no second. All right, moving right along. Finance committee reports. We have a request from the fire chief. We have a request from the fire chief. I met with Chief Swinton a week or so ago, and he advised me that one of his fire engines, well, I knew one of his fire engines had been involved in an accident, and it is total, it's a total loss. And so he's got to replace that fire engine. He has found a used fire engine that seems to be in very good condition. He does have funds available in his bond account, and he'd like to, he'd like to ask this council to go ahead and approve the purchase of this fire truck. And Chief Swinton is here to answer any questions that you all might have. And again, he does have the money available in his bond account. He has more than enough money to do what he's requesting.
Chief, that, that, that truck is in fairly good shape, you say?
Yes, sir. Myself and two of the captain, chief making his offers on Captain Jamie Lind, we went to Greelyville. I looked at it, we got all the record for it. It's a C1 of truck along C and B in Lax.
Okay.
$2,000.
Okay, how much, how much it say on the phone?
$175,000.
Okay, just make sure it's a good one, because I remember years ago, we got, went to New York or someplace and we got some junk, so let's just make sure we get some good trucks.
It's not those.
Now, I want to be clear, so everyone knows exactly what we're doing. The truck is $175,000, but Chief Swinton's going to need an additional $25,000 to outfit it. So his total request for us to approve to be removed, for him to transfer funds out of that account and purchase this truck and outfit it is $200,000. But again, he has way more than he needs, and he has money in the account to take care of his bond indebtedness, so there are no issues. He's, he's done a really, really good job with this particular account and, and the management of it. So anyone else with any other questions of Chief Swinton? Is there a motion to purchase this fire truck for Chief Swinton in the, for the price of $200,000, which includes the price of the truck and $25,000? The price of the truck, which is $175,000, plus $25,000 to outfit the truck. Is there a motion?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Councilman Miller.
Second.
Is there, okay, and we have a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Councilman, and Councilwoman, and Ms. Tammy. Thank you.
And Chief Swinton, on behalf of this council, we want to thank you and your staff, both your full-time employees and your volunteers for the great work that you all do to keep Williamsburg County safe. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you all.
All right, we have a few appearances tonight. First, we have Mr. Michael Gatherse, who is the founder and president of Black River Youth Athletics. We do want to remind all of our folks that will be appearing tonight that we try to keep our appearances limited to three minutes in order to give everyone equal time. Mr. Gatherse, so good seeing you again. Yes, sir.
Thank you for giving me this moment to share my thoughts and opinions on some work that I've been doing for the last three years. I'm here tonight representing about 50 kids. We need your help. The last three years, I've been living here in Williamsburg County, and I, I'm not here to criticize anyone, I'm just here to try to help. And basically, I'm asking for a job as a volunteer for the Williamsburg County Rec Football Department, which means that if y'all accept me as a volunteer, I would work specifically with every neighborhood in Williamsburg County to bring them together, and I would guarantee you this time next year, I would probably have at least 150 to 200 kids involved. That's been my goal from day one, to try to get all of the kids in the county united, to get them to dream big enough where they could, I could gladly proudly say that all of them will be academically eligible. But in order for me to do that, I'm going to need help from every borough, you know, up north we call a borough, but every district, because this is my oldest grandson, he born and raised in Tri-O. I live in Greelyville, but I deal with kids from King Street, everywhere. I must admit, Hemingway is a little far out, but I do have friends over there, and I support what they do 100% because it ain't about me and those coaches, it's about the kids. So I'm coming here today to ask for a job at Williamsburg County Rec to see what we could do to get the rec department back on track, and it's specifically pertaining to the most aggressive sport, which is football. And my age group would be from eight to 13. So that's what my question is tonight. And if we are going to do it, if y'all are going to do it, we need to start tomorrow. Because before we know it, we're going to be right back where we, where we at right now, which is nowhere. So if y'all could consider that after the holidays, Chairman Washington, if you could, you know, let me know when we could come and work the details out, because I prefer, if I am going to do anything, I prefer it to be a contractual, you know, as a volunteer, where we have specific what my duties are. And I have about 10 young men and women that's willing to help, because we're not looking for pay. We just looking to try to keep, we got enough alcoholics, drug dealers, and thugs roaming around here. The kids we dealing with, they constantly need us, you could say 24 hours out the day. I mean, because a lot of the parents I'm dealing with think that we're babysitters, but it ain't that. You know, we kind of behind with stuff, and we trying to get caught up. So that's the reason why we need everyone who's here. In fact, Terrence Wilson is very much involved with what we doing, so I'm pretty sure he know, or he's going to know what we talked about. So pretty much, if y'all can consider that, I appreciate it.
Very good. Do any of the members of council have any questions for Mr. Gatherse? All right, thank you so much for that information. We will certainly take that into consideration. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you kindly.
Yes, sir. All right. We next have Ms. Tracy Presley of CMD Pantry.
Good evening.
Hello. How are you?
Like I said earlier, I am not the one speaking tonight. I bring to you Change SC Plus, Pick 42 Foundation, Ms. Miko Pickett.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. If we may, we have some handouts for you guys. We're not, we're not going to read these slides, but my name is Miko Pickett. Tracy, get back up here, sis. And we're here to introduce our nonprofit organization...
Thank you, ma'am.
...and the work that we've been, we have the privilege of doing in Williamsburg County. And we would be remiss if we did not start with, we've been here a little bit, we wanted to come to you and tell you exactly what we're doing, how long we're going to be here, and what it's about. So our program, Pick 42 Foundation, it's a nonprofit organization. We are based in Marion County, but we serve four counties. We serve Marion, Dillon, Marlboro, and now Williamsburg. And our programs are around food, fitness, and fun. The food program is a program we call Eat Local PD. And what I'm here to talk to you today about is an additional grant that we received. We're in partnership with DHEC as well as the Department of Aggregation, and they've get, the Department Agriculture, sorry about that. And they have provided us with an additional $164,000. But let me back up a little bit and tell you what Pick 42 Foundation has been doing since January this year, is we are one of 13 aggregators in this state for food. So what that means is that there was a federal grant, the LFPA grant, and on that grant, we're one of 13 organizations that have been given money to buy food from socially disadvantaged farmers and give it to the community for free. And we've been doing this since January, and since January, we've been granted a little bit over a million dollars. And now on top of that, $164,000. So what Change SC is all about is, as we looked at the counties that we supported, one of the things that was important to us is with Williamsburg being just on the fringe of Marion County, we wanted to come here, and that's where our friend Tracy Presley comes in. She has welcomed us, she has helped us to find locations, which we will tell you all about. So the pilot project, the purpose of the pilot project is for us to say, okay, Department of Agriculture, DHEC, if they give us a little bit more funding, what can you do? Can you address the fact that in South Carolina, we have very high morbidity rates because of the food we eat? Right? Can we change things in our counties by providing fresh local food, by providing training programs in a fun way, cooking demonstrations, and things like that? And so that is exactly what we're doing with the funding. The program, the Change SC program, will run until January 31st, and then after January 31st, there will be a, it'll go back to the state to decide how much additional funding or where it goes from there. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Terry Davis, and she is the director in charge of our different sites in the various counties.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Who, who doesn't like fresh local vegetables? Who needs fresh local vegetables? Everybody. There's no limit with who's in need of it. And we are so glad, as Ms. Pickett said, to be here in Williamsburg County with Ms. Tracy Presley. But I just want to share with you, if you look on this sheet, some of the sites that we have, we have 16 sites that we've located, identified that we are providing these fresh local vegetables to. In Williamsburg County, and that's where I'm going to start with Tracy Presley, we have Greater Bethel, Miracle Temple, and Good Hope in Greedyville, South Carolina. And we also have seven sites located in Marion County, three in Marlboro County, and three in Dillon County. When we look at the churches, that's when said, when you provide the sites as a church, are we talking about just the members of that church that'll be able to get the vegetables? No. We are using that as a site. Anybody in that community, it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter how rich you are, how poor you are. Everybody loves fresh vegetables, and that's what we do. On Thursdays, we are in Marion County, Dillon County, and Marlboro County. And on Fridays, we are here in, in Williamsburg County at these three sites. And we look forward to having everybody in the community come out and get fresh local vegetables. There's one story I always share when I talk about our communities and, and how appreciative they are of what we're doing. A lady said to me one day, Ms. Davis, we didn't do it for two weeks. She said, Ms. Davis, I miss those fresh vegetables. She said, I had to end up opening up a can of vegetables, and it was salty. We talking about changing the outlook on people on eating healthy, and this is where it starts with us, with Pick 42, which is a part of Change, South Carolina, and that's our aim, to change the eating habits, to change the outlook on what is needed with eating. But before we get to me with the distribution sites, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nelson, who will tell you about the farming and what takes place with that.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Getting food to all these sites that she talked about, it's not an easy task, but it's one that I enjoy. Why? Because we get the vegetables from local farmers, farmers who look like you and I, who look like ladies in the building, Native Americans, that's what we do. We go out, identify these farmers, get them signed up, and we pick up the food that they grow. We've encouraged people who thought they never want to do this again, because you know, as farmers, we've had a hard time trying to get things going, getting monies to keep the farmers going. There's stories, horror stories, where people walked off their land because why? They couldn't make a living at it. So now, we got people who are very excited about doing the farming thing. And some of them have stepped up big time. We've asked them to please, you know, grow more, and we grow, and we grow, and we grow. We pick them up, bring them to our hub, and we distribute it to all the sites that Ms. Davis has been talking about. Those people who want to deliver their own stuff, well, guess what? We'll give them $50 for bringing it to us. That's a big help. Doesn't do a lot, but it's gas money. And it gives people a place to get rid of the stuff that they spent so much time trying to grow and to present to all the people in this area. We buy cattle, chickens, collard greens, winter cabbage, tomatoes, watermelons, you name it, we buy it, and, and then we give it back to the community so that they can enjoy it. And if you know farmers, let them get in touch with us, please, because we're always looking for additional farmers. And some of them think that it's not going to be easy, and always think it's the government. We are not the government. We are not the government. We are just a vessel that they're using, they're giving us money so that we can give it back to the people in our community that look like us.
That's perfect. That's perfect. So when he talks about giving us money, it's who wins, right? So because we are a nonprofit organization, the grant money that we get, we're seeding directly back into the community. As a matter of fact, when we first met Ms. Presley, we were buying her food. Her family's a farmer, are farmers, and we were buying her food. And so what we're able to do is not only are we able to buy the food from the farmers, a lot of the, what kept them from farming is now, is no longer, like, you don't have to have, you don't have to be gap certified in order for us to buy your food. However, we have a full-time farm ambassador that's working with a cohort of farmers to help them be gap certified, because this program ends in June 2025. By June 2025, we want to see that our farmers are gap certified, that we've opened up new markets in our community, and that we could continue to grow. And like Ms. Davis said, we're giving people fresh vegetables, vegetables that they're used to maybe getting out of a can. So with the programs that we have, we're bringing in chefs to do cooking demonstrations. Every single bag that we're going to be producing for... Every single bag that we're gonna be producing from this point on will have recipe cards that will explain to you how you can prepare this fresh local food. And just to give you some stats, we're providing fresh local food to 16, 1,650 families across four counties, and 250 of those families are in Williamsburg County. So what's next? There's a proviso. So in our partnership with Department, uh, with DHEC, as well as with the Department of Agriculture, we're, we're gathering data all along the way. And the data that we gather is then gonna be presented to the special counsel that was appointed by the governor to look at food security in our region. And we believe, when they see the data, and they see the outcomes and the changes that have happened in this very short period of time, that they will fund additional support for this program. So we wanted to let you know, that's what we're doing here. So if you happen to hear about lines of cars getting vegetables, it's us. And that we will be back. So in January, once this data is presented to the state, and we find out what's next, we will come back, and we will let you know where we go from there. So we thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much, Ms. Presley, for, um, for giving us this opportunity to speak before council today.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all so much, and thank you, uh, I'm sorry, yes.
One thing, I didn't mention the volunteers. Not one of our sites would be a success if we didn't have volunteers. So I need you to make sure you locate our three sites, find someone that's volunteering, and thank them. Because the program only works because we have the volunteers who are dedicated to come out on Thursday and Friday and help us serve the community. And we just want to thank you again.
Thank you so much. Um, do any of the members of council have any questions?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
I think this is very great. It's a great thing you guys are doing, and I applaud you for it.
I applaud you for it to the highest. Um, but my question is, in doing this, as great as it is, is there an educational component where once you get the fruits and vegetables and good food to the people, teach them how to prepare it and use it effectively and efficiently? And, uh, also, my next question was, I think I heard the gentleman say that when you bring the foods to them, and then, you know, you help them out with gas expenses and so forth. Do y'all don't select who you buy the vegetables from? Anybody that brings it, you buy them?
No, there's a process. Let me answer your first question. So, um, in terms of the volunteers, we have 150 volunteers every week that are helping us to make this happen. Um, in terms of the, um, education, that's a very big part of what we do. So, yes, we're providing, we're providing the, um, the food. We're putting recipe cards in there. And part of the additional $164,000 in funding I was telling you about, we have funding so that we can sponsor events. And we sponsored one event so far, I think it was God's Promise down here? I'm sorry, we, what was it?
Autism.
Autism. We sponsored the autism event. So we have earmarked $3,500 to spend in December alone to, um, support additional events. And so some of the ways that we do, so in order to get, um, a $500 or $250 sponsorship from Change SC, they would need to, if they're having a meal, you know, have water at the meal. Don't offer fried foods. And then we give everybody a bag of fresh produce to take home, right? So in those little things, we're, we're attempting to educate the community that, you know, if you're gonna have an event, just don't fry the food, or, you know, if you're gonna have sugary soda, also have water. And then in terms of the farmers, this is the beauty. I think, I know that the reason why Pick 42 was selected because our peers are well-known, very large aggregators. We are not. What we was, is we was a nonprofit organization that had a connection to the community and to the black farmers. We had been meeting with black farmers going on three years now, just listening to them. What are your needs? What are your concerns? Um, providing them with resources. We've written grants for farmers so that they can get funding into, into their farms. One farm was able to get a $10,000 farm, a $10,000 grant. We have four farmers right now. We have $12,000 that we're gonna be helping them to get their gap certification. So, in order to be onboarded into our program is rather easy. All you have to do is have farm, right? And a lot of people have what they call big gardens, their farms. When we talk to the Department of Ag, and we ask them how big a farm had to be, there's no, there's no size, right? This, this could be a farm, if, as long as I'm growing food. So our, our farm ambassador, she will take the application. It's a Department of Agriculture application, which we review and approve. We will go visit that farm, and, uh, Mr. Bill and his team, they have certain criteria that they're looking for. Um, and, and the thing is, is we don't turn anybody away. We help them. So for instance, um, we're preparing farmers for June 2025. So we are buying the boxes that they have to put their food in. Because in order to sell on the open market, your food has to be packed a certain way. It has to be washed a certain way, sometimes, sometimes not. So we helping them with that.
We show you how to pack it.
Yes.
Okay.
And we also have a, a scoring system, I'll call it, right? We'll, we'll show you, we'll give you the materials that you need to sell us the food. Well, if something happens and we happen to get bad quality food, because it happens, we will then say, okay, we'll set you up with resources. That will, maybe you have an issue with a pest, some, a pesticide, you know, or you have bugs on your farm, or, you know, you picked it too early or too late, right? We will help you with that. We will also send, if Clemson Extension is needed, we'll send an extension, an extension agent out, and then we'll give you another chance. You can sell us that food again. You fix all the things we've asked you to fix. And then, as long as you don't have another fupa, then you're good. Now, when, we will buy the food, even if we can't use it. Because the purpose of the program is to educate farmers and to help them to get into the market, right? So when we say we're gonna, when we ask you to grow it, and we say we're gonna buy it, we mean that. We're gonna buy it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Why I ask that question, and let me be clear about that. I'm from the Greedyville area, and several years ago, um, we had farmers that would grow produce, and they were growing it for market, and some of their fertilization processes was not very kosher at all. So I just wanted to make sure y'all had some monitoring process in place where y'all just didn't buy randomly for anyone to bring it to you, because sometime, you know, people bring you things, um, there'd be some ways they prepare it that's not really, um, standard.
We visit all the farms.
Good.
We visit all the farms.
Okay, great.
Before we buy, and we also, the partnerships is what, you know, we're up here, but, um, our partners are the Department of Agriculture, Clemson Extension, we have technical support from University of South Carolina. So, you know, we have been kind of gradually getting into this work, and at the end of our work, at, our goal is to provide fresh local food to the community, because food is medicine, and our food is literally killing us. And we believe and we know that if we can provide better food, fresher food, to the community, that we'll see outcomes change, and we've already seen it. The food that we distribute here in Williamsburg County on Friday was harvested when, Mr. Bill?
Probably a couple of days before.
Tuesday or Wednesday. Tuesday or Wednesday it was harvested. We buy, we buy cows, we buy chickens. When we buy the cows, they're, when they come here, they're flash, they're frozen. But that cow was mooing two weeks ago, or less.
Correct.
We buy it, it hangs for seven days, then it goes to the processing plant, flash frozen, we put it on a truck, and we bring it here. The best food on the planet.
Very good. All right, anyone else with any questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much, and thank you, thank you all for everything that you all do in the community.
Thank you so much, and we apologize. We're driving back to Marion, so we're gonna head on out.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, next we have, uh, the clerk of court, um, Ms. Sharon Staggers. Mr. Tony, can you check outside to see if the clerk of court is here? Yes, sir. You, you were not able to locate the clerk of court. Very good, thank you. I just checked my email, um, members of council. I do not have an email or a, um, let me check, make sure I don't have a text either. Okay. I do not have an email or a text, um, from her. Madam clerk, have you heard? Okay, all right. Let's move on now. We have a couple of matters that we need to discuss in executive session. Uh, discussions of a contractual matter concerning the sale of some county property, as well as to receive some legal advice from our legal counsel regarding a matter covered by attorney-client privilege. Is there a motion to go in executive session? All right, so we have a motion to go in executive session by Ms., Councilman Miller, and a second by Councilman Woods. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, we will be in executive session.
...
Thank you.